I'm Shannon. Thank you. I was just talking about, no, I was just saying thank you because my ancestor did it just recently. And on the road also.
And maybe it's for the purpose of the church. Of the public person. Private.
Well.
He came in.
Joining.
You know, when Canal Road started happening and down there. We became so frustrated. We were even like, I was already in South County. And I told him, if I'd love to come there. So he would have sat around here as a brewery. And I can't, but I think he really appreciated the fact that you're connecting.
Well, you can sell, you can sell alcohol. Now, like butter and cheese, they're considered a restaurant because they have CD. So that's why they want to have now somebody who can open their store and account. You have permission to have, the owner's permission for our reception.
And the board can't.
How do we get our owners happy? Yeah, now I went over to my ancestor, called him, and I said, how did you go about doing that? And he didn't care. So then I contacted him. And it's on verbal. You have so many jobs.
Like a tent. And maybe it's because it's just the road.
Yeah, dawn.
And maybe it's because it's just the road.
And like, you know, a lot of people. So you can't be in a house. So I would cheat though. They have their beer cave and now it's like. So they put their own stuff on the floor there. So I just take a contact. I was really curious about it.
All, all we're working on. Do you have one? I'll search. Hey, man, how you doing? Are you taking notes?
I got a lot of things.
George here seems to be. Oh, we did, I did. You all good with that?
Okay, we can change.
Um, no, no.
George, you're an investor manager.
I did have that.
Still has a job to make.
Did you get free wine? Yeah. I think it was on my pop up.
I noticed something.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. That's only thing.
So where are we?
It's on the police report. It's the first change.
I got a little mind. Are they, they're in Miami? I ain't know. They're cereal.
When I did it.
They're Viennia. They're about Viennia. So they're very soft to see a king's got. Same as Blackberry. The Blackberry's. Brew them so they're bigger berries.
So like, we're working some alone?
Yep.
But you wanna? No. Yeah, I have.
Yeah, so I have, I just have two things that I need to do.
I noticed there were a lot, a lot of one. On the end of the wood that one.
Why is that? Is that working?
Deer don't. Because they're prickly.
It's all.
Venturing or two. I like to, I have.
There's not. Not that. There's some way that.
The deer, the deer.
Well.
Yeah. Where are you?
It shouldn't be. But doesn't, don't, you can't be having on the judge that it's not that. I don't think.
When the garden. Well, they, they clean me out of harvest. I mean, they're, they're, I have a dwelling, so that's in a foot from my house.
I could call the meeting to order and if you join me with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we'll, um, public comment.
Just letting everybody know we're recording and streaming through a community page on Facebook. Thanks.
And we have York County Planning Commission.
Hi, good evening. Can I read your name? Good evening, my name is Chris Cobb, I'm Senior Transportation Director of York County Planning Commission. Here tonight to talk to you about the 2025 Transportation Improvement Program. I handed out a packet of my slides. You can follow along, you can listen, either or will do. I will go through my presentation, talk about who we are, what we do, the planning commission, what is the tip? The expectations and opportunity for input. And after that, I'll open it up to any general questions that you might have about the process and where we're going to go from here. So at the York County Planning Commission, our mission is to guide sustainable development and preservation as well as to improve the quality of life in York County. And we do this on a number of fronts. I work for the Transportation Planning Division. We also work in tandem with the Long Range Planning Division, municipal planning, and some of the other groups to do the land use based planning throughout the county. As a member of the YCPC, we are also part of the York Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. They are the body that makes up and decides on all the transportation projects and funding that happens in the county on an annual, biannual, two decade long planning program. And the, the Metropolitan Planning Organization is made up of a bunch of different committees that all kind of funnel into one. We have the Technical Committee and the Coordinating Committee. The Technical Committee gives recommendations on projects to the Coordinating Committee. The Coordinating Committee takes action on the funding policy and whether to approve or not to approve projects to go on the tip or funding to go to different types of projects, things like that. And we also have another, a number of different committees that also provide comments to the Coordinating Committee, including the Transit Committee, which is the rabbit, which is Rabbit Transit, the Bicycle and Pedestrian Committee. We are soon forming a Freight Advisory Committee to detail and work and program all the freight activity that we have in the county. Then we also have something called the TASSA Review Committee, which is the transportation set aside, alternative set aside, which is all the non-motorized transportation projects in the county. And the Technical Committee and Coordinating Committee is made up of members of PennDOT, the York County Planning Commission, Townships, Boroughs, and the City of York. We have several core transportation planning documents that we work on. We start at the highest level with our Long Range Transportation Plan. We plan out 20, 25 years, kind of move all of our projects through the Capital Improvement Plan into a 12-year plan. And then we funnel it into a four-year plan that we update every two years called the Transportation Improvement Program. And that four years is, are all of our projects for that time span. And every one of those projects is financially constrained to the exact dollar amount. So we have the Long Range Planning, which is just an idea of how much we think a project is going to cost, you know, with inflation out 20 years. And once we get down to the tip, we have specific funding dedicated to specific projects. And some of the other plans that we've been working on this year, we finalized and passed a Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan for the county. The, we've been working on our Coordinated Plan with Rabbit Transit and other, you know, organizations that drive people around, transport people, like senior citizens, hospitals, things like that. And we've also finished our freight plan, the first in the county for this past year. So what is the Transportation Improvement Program? In 2023, we have programmed 116 projects for four years totaling $192 million investment in the county. And the, the projects that you'll find on the tip are maintenance, road maintenance and bridge maintenance type of projects, also known as asset management, safety improvements, congestion reduction, biking and walking, walking infrastructure, as well as our transit projects. And we have certain funding that comes into the YCPC from state and federal sources. We have some non-flexible funds, which are, say, Highway Safety Improvement Program dollars that are specific to only safety projects. We have flexible spending accounts, which are federal service transportation funds where we can be flexible and put them towards any type of project that we feel is, is best for the county. And what I would like to really hone in on is the upcoming 2025 Transportation Improvement Program and the amount of funding that we actually have. So you'll see a whole bunch of green bars and we're estimating 202.6 million dollar investment for the years 2025 through 2029. 120 of that dedicated to road maintenance and flexible funding, 45 million towards bridge maintenance, 11.7 million towards safety, 23.6 million towards congestion air quality, and 2 million dedicated to biking and walking. Now, we might have 202 million dollars, but if you look on this page with all the yellow and green on it, the yellow indicates all of the money that is already allocated to projects and we are carrying that project over from one tip to the next. So say we have a bridge project in Conawago Township. The project itself has to be programmed, preliminary engineering, through construction. Those projects normally take around six years to get completed, so they have to carry over from one tip to the next. We have to carry the funding over. So we don't have 202 million dollars for new projects. We, we only have about 48 million dollars for new projects. So all that other money already allocated from work and we just have to carry it over for the next tip. So out of that 120 million for road maintenance, we have about 35 million. Bridge maintenance, we have about 3 million left, safety, 4 million, congestion air quality, about 3 million, biking, walking, 1.3 million. And the biggest drawback to doing tip projects is with state and federal dollars, the project timelines are longer and the costs are increased. So if the municipality wants to do a road paving project on their own without tip dollars, it's going to save you money, save, you know, the county money, but it's also going to take a lot less time if, than if we put it on the tip. It has to go through all those state and federal regulations, thus it takes longer, thus the price goes up. So right now, we in the York County Planning Commission are going out to all 72 municipalities in the county to deliver the same presentation, to do our municipal outreach, to let you know what we are doing at the county level and to solicit feedback from the municipality. If there is a new project that is going to be programmed on the tip that is within Conawago Township, you will be invited to the PennDOT Connect meetings where we'll talk specifically about that project and talk about other issues related to projects throughout your municipality as well as, you know, stormwater issues or anything else that we can get to PennDOT so that they understand the project as a whole. We'll go through formal comment in the spring and then hopefully adopt the, the 2025 tip in June of next year. So that leads me to where do those municipalities come in at? We need your guidance and your understanding of municipality to give us all the information and feedback on what you would like to see improved transportation wise in your area, whether it's roads, bridges, stormwater, safety, congestion. We're looking to, to get your input on the issues facing your municipality. And that's why on the last page, all my contact, email, phone number, you can call me anytime and we can get all the information to PennDOT and work on either programming the project on the long range plan and getting it phoned through the system or putting it on the tip to be pushed ahead a little bit sooner. But that is my pitch. Do I have any questions or comments?
Okay, I don't have anything. Josh turns, good. And I'm sure Josh follows on everything with, um.
Yeah, I.
Our congestion is our big issue.
Absolutely. And, you know, we are currently working with Tri-County Regional Planning and Lancaster to develop a regional congestion management process and update all of our congestion planning within the, the next year or two. So we've been working off of a 2016 model for, for the congestion around the area, but we're looking to update that and have all up to date data and statistics that we can start programming a little bit more efficiently, the, the congestion issues throughout the county.
And is the Canal Road Betterment Group in your program?
Yeah, that, that project specifically is not on the tip. It is being funded through private developers and, you know, the, the, the public-private partnership that, that they had worked out. The last I heard that that is looking to begin construction in 2024, that is an early estimate. We are still working on the possibility of funding Act of 26 at Canal Road. That's, that's a big haul, especially with the amount of warehouse development around that location. But we are working with all the municipalities that are involved and PennDOT to try to come up with a way to, to, to fund that project. But there, there's a lot of, there's a lot of warehousing coming up in, in Conawago as well. Just a, a lot of land development right now and that we need to, to work on for, for the future for our transportation.
Okay, I'm sure we'll be in contact.
Absolutely.
Anybody have any other questions? Good?
Hey, thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, did we have any other public comments? You just state your name and address.
Sure. Zachary Mathis, 135 Old Stone Way, Stonegate Commons. We, I'm the president of our HOA, Stone Gates, Phase Three and Four. And I, we've noticed construction beginning on Phase Four and we have the members of the board and our fellow homeowners are curious what is being built. We have no information. We're trying to gather some information if there could be some guidance on.
Okay, I'm sure Josh or Chris can help you out with that. We do have some single homes going in and we do have some townhomes.
Yeah, Phase Four is all townhomes.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because we were, we've been getting a lot of information back and forth. There's been a lot of traffic already as is and a lot of people are concerned with townhomes going in, the traffic being worse than it is already.
Phase Three pretty much has been finished.
It has, Phase Three is finished, but our board, our HOA is actually Phase Three and Four. So obviously we're confused with what would happen.
It's all townhomes. There may be two single family homes that are on really large lots.
Okay, so, and that's all been approved and everything?
Yeah, that's why you see the construction's starting now, that they are.
Okay.
Beginning construction.
Okay.
And I think you need to be aware as an HOA, it is a different developer doing Four, so I don't know.
Yeah, we were not given any information on that.
Yeah, so I, I wouldn't, I guess what I'm cautioning you is I wouldn't be so sure that you are the HOA for Phase Four. I don't know.
I'm assuming it's every townhome, yeah, we, we kind of assumed that, but yeah, we had, been not getting any information. So that's why we were trying to gather information.
It's going to be up to Four to establish their own HOA, which may be you as well, but.
Yeah, our board is called, you know, legally, Stonegate Commons Three and Four. So that's why we were confusing. It's townhomes, our Bible says same family homes only.
Right.
So, yeah, that, that was really throwing us for a loop, so.
Oh, the issue is the, again, Stonegate, it, it technically what is being built right now is not Stonegate Commons Phase Four. It's actually called Stonegate Four.
Okay.
It's a, because the developer is different than who developed the original three. So this is kind of a, it is an extension of your neighborhood, but it was processed by kind of a separate entity with different. Again, they changed the, they received zoning approval to change what was in the, the zone there. They went through the preliminary plan process that was different than what the original preliminary plan was for Phase Four. So we've really been processing that here as a, really a different neighborhood, although it's attached to yours and finishes your development out. And we held the requirements of completing the road network, the way that the, it was not done in the manner of true extension of your neighborhood.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know how that works with the HOA.
Sure.
Yeah, you see, a lot of it would be controlled by your covenants and declarations. And if it says, like you mentioned, that it specifically, you know, relates to single family homes.
Correct.
So if that's what your covenant says, then you would only, you know, those two homes might be.
Part of ours.
Might be part of yours, whereas the townhomes are controlled by a different document, a different set of declarations.
Understandable. Okay, well, thank you very much for the information. Really appreciate it.
And I think that was all approved back in February. Do you recall, Fritz? So if you check the minutes on our website, I think you'll get some more information.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, did we have any other comments? Okay, Resolution 2023 dash 14, the Act 537 plan.
Need to talk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure, regular.
Yep.
My name is Jacob Seacrest, I work for Bupart Horn. So in the last two months, we weren't present at the last meeting, but we've made some revisions to the Act 537 Plan per year comments and discussions with Derek and Terry. The big one is we kind of made it more clear what Phase One and Phase Two of the wastewater treatment plant expansion are. Phase One is the bulk of it, and that is where all of the physical structures are going to be built. So that's the, the true building of the new wastewater treatment plant. That would bring the permanent capacity up to 980,000 gallons per day. And then the Phase Two is a, a, a re-permanent capacity. So the, the physical structure of what we're building is capable of going up to 1.5 MGB, but we don't need to permit that part because crossing that 1 million gallon threshold creates more testing, more costs from the authorities' perspective and as far as daily operation. So the 1.5, the Phase Two, would be any collection system upgrades as well as increased chemical costs, things of that nature that just increase in a bigger plant size. So that was clarification for that, as well as we did discuss at the latest authority meeting that we are moving forward with a new tapping fee review and calculation. So we're in the process of doing that to see what. What changes need to be made for that to accommodate this, the financial part of the upgrade? So those are probably the two big things that I think were questions and comments.
I think the, uh, one concern was making sure that the current residents that are on the system weren't going to pay additional fees.
Yeah, so the first step obviously is any grant money that we can come forward with. Second step is increasing the tapping. Just from preliminary thoughts, the tapping fee hasn't been increased since 2005. That was the last one we set up where, where it is today. So there's probably going to be some sort of increase in that, which will aid in financing the upgrade. And then the third option, which is the least favorable among the authority, is to raise user rates. Raising user rates has the least amount of impact on financing it, just because of just the sheer volume. Like if you raise the tapping fee by a thousand dollars, that has, that carries way more weight than increasing the user rate by three dollars a month type of thing. So I can't say yes or no as to whether or not it's going to be increased. That all depends on the amount of growth that happens. If the growth that we are projecting does occur and where the tapping fee eventually adds on as we finish our review of that.
When, when do you anticipate the review of that?
Uh, we're kind of having a rough number by the end of the evening, at the end of August. That's the ballpark. And I believe it's the notice to have an actual set new tapping fee by the end of 2023. So obviously any development after that point would be impacted by that.
Okay, so this resolution, we need that from the.
We don't have that. Are you, are you seeking action tonight?
I would like to. The benefit of seeing it tonight is that we can officially submit it to EP and get the ball rolling. Again, this is a planning document and we are planning for the growth that we foresee in the, within the township. Obviously that includes Freeway Square, that includes warehouses that are coming in, that includes Pickering, Bridge Mews down the road, all of those. So this is planning for as much development as we see as possible. If the development doesn't happen, then if development doesn't happen, that's not a problem. It's not necessarily a bad thing. But by signing, by executing the resolution, voting on it, that it was accurate, adequately planning for what we see in the future.
So it still seems like there's a number of contingencies about grants and decisions about tapping fees and stuff. What, what's your timeline for when you know what grants you'll buy for, when you'll have them?
The original timeline we were given by the, by the state was June, I think, and they shot that down. I think maybe September for the grants. We put in for a, I believe the total amount was 13 million dollars. So that would be, it's two thirds of the cost of the wastewater plant upgrade, the 20 million. So we'd like to hear, we're not finished yet. We don't know for sure when we're going to hear about that. Again, tapping fee, we've got to shoot to get that done by the end of 2023 to make sure that's in place, so there's less question marks about that.
Okay, so is, are you waiting to make the decision on the tapping fees and those other things until after you find out about the grants?
I'm not sure. That would be a question for the authority members. My guess is no. That's the fact that they want a rough number by the end of the month. That's going to be, they want to act on it before we know a decision on that. The grants, and the grants don't impact that tapping fee.
You said, if, correct me if I was wrong, but I thought you said that the first option was the grants, the second option was the tapping fee, and the third option was.
Sorry, I guess that's kind of one A, one B. The tapping fee is standalone from the grants. The grants are going to supply the majority of the funding, fingers crossed. The grants are going to supply the majority of the funding for the wastewater plant upgrade. for the wastewater treatment plant upgrade. The tapping fees will be in those upgrades as well. Tapping fee is, um, it's a calculation of the current assets of the authority, the collection system treatment plant, as well as the section that goes to Dover. And it's just the cause moved up from when they were originally built, as well as any upgrades that occurred since that tapping fee was originally calculated. So, yeah.
So it's up to you, if you wanna.
Well, I know Brian was really following it.
Yeah.
And I'd be more comfortable if we wait until he's here, uh, next month.
Okay, and I mean.
I'm fine with that, September.
Yeah, well, so next month's August, you should, I mean, if you wanted to wait until.
Don't worry.
I mean, I'm sorry, yeah, you're right.
I know.
I missed last week, so. I was on vacation last month, so I was, yeah, I mean, if you wanted to wait till.
September.
Well, you could wait till after September when they've.
Give us the numbers.
Give us some of these numbers. Like, that's, you know, that's up to you, but at, at least you won't wait until September and then.
Yeah, until we have all three supervisors.
Yep. And just to be clear, you guys are, aside from that, you guys are relatively clear on everything else that is within the plan and plan.
Yeah.
Well, I think, like she said, one, one, you know, the supervisor's not here, has been kind of vested in involving some of this, and he may have his own questions, so I think that would be, but I, I think generally, yes.
All right.
All right.
Okay, thank you. We hate to keep kicking his hand down the road, but we wanna make sure for our residents that we have everything that we need.
Yep.
Okay, uh, anybody else? All right, uh, we won't be adopting, well, uh, the hair motion to adopt the agenda.
No. Oh, the adoption, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, resolution, sorry. Uh, I'm making a motion to adopt the agenda as prepared.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we'll put off the approval of the previous minutes because you weren't here, John.
Right.
And, uh, Brian's not here tonight, so we'll move that up to next month. And we'll do, we can do a vote if you're gonna be here.
I'll be here.
Okay, good. No complaints or anything?
No.
Okay. Planning and joining, we have Freedom Square master plan modification.
Good evening, everyone. I'll give you a, a couple things, just so you all know. We, we thought this, I thought it was a modification, but R G S thought it was a, uh, a variance. But, uh, so we, we talked last, when we were at the planning commission, and determined that it was already part of the master plan approval through the ordinances. So I know Dave, should we talk to Steve, and they've, um, discussed that, so it really wasn't a variance, so they voted.
Didn't have to go through planning with him.
Correct, so they voted to, for it to come to you this evening. So basically, the long story short of it, is, um, there's a section, because we had to sort of redesign it, we end, um, through D E P, they wanted more test pits, and we happened to move the road down a little bit. So we ended up with this, um, strange little high that I'm like, well, we'll just make it, uh, part of the open space, part of the common ground. Uh, I was just gonna do an easement, Derek said he'd rather a lot, so instead of the fifty-foot lot line, it's gonna be ten feet so that, you know, kids or people can go back there. So really, that's the, the modification, unless Derek wants to explain it better than that. But, uh, so we're here in, in, uh, that's the colored form, and then I, I gave you basically this, this piece. It's, uh, between lot thirty-three and thirty-two. But you see, here, John, it's this, it's this, and then it's also the access to the park.
Okay.
So it's here and then over there. So we're sort of making it, it's both what lot number is at, one sixty-eight, it would become a, a separate lot. And then, then we're not, um, having any issues, who's gonna know it and those type of things. So again, through David and Steve, we determined that it was a minor modification, come visit you. We've submitted the plans, and I know Derek, um, had a, a couple meetings with Chris, phone calls or whatever, and they've clarified a bunch of things, there's some stormwater, I don't, did you get it done or not yet?
Stormwater will be issued this week.
Okay, so we figured we'd come back next month, so I was coming anyways just to give you an update of what we were doing. It's all submitted, and we're, um, moving forward. I think that, uh, I, I don't know how many meetings I've had with D E P, but that'll be the, that'll be what we're waiting for, so.
Yeah, a lot of people are waiting on that.
Yeah, so, um, we did, I don't know if I told you, I think I told the planning commission, they had us do ninety-six more test pits. Okay, so, um, we've done those and, and, um, we've given them all that information. We're in there, I typed it in this morning, it still just says under review, so. And then the other thing is, I emailed Steve after I was at the planning commission, this is a side note, but, uh, D E P says their, uh, if a township is willing to provide a letter, um, preferred, I forget what it, okay, I can't even think of it right now, but a preferred status letter that this project is important to the community and the economics of the township, we might move up a file or two, I don't know how it works, but, so I asked Steve to talk to you about that too, if that would be something that could provide, if he's to help divide or whatever. So that would just help it move along. I don't know if it really moves at all, but they said that it might help. Other than that, that's, that's really all that was here for tonight.
Yeah, very patriotic streets.
Yeah, so that's what we're working on.
Okay, Freedom Square.
Right.
Yeah, and just, so just to chime in, you know, this was something that when the original ordinance for Freedom Square was, was passed, you know, we really incorporated this, you know, anticipated and incorporated that this change would be done through supervisors rather than having to run through the planning commission or something every time, so. And I think for this reason, just to make it easier, that there's gonna be a lot of these little, small little changes as they're going through the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, and I don't see any problem with that. That would be a homeowner association.
Yes, ma'am.
And they would be the one to maintain it.
Correct.
I think that's what you were saying about why they make it a lot.
And it's not gonna be, um, recreation equipment on it or?
No, we thought it was, it's like a half acre. Maybe in the future, there's a gazebo or something on it, but I didn't wanna just, um, give it to the, the neighbors and have these odd lots, we thought we have this open space, we can all just let everybody use it. It's, you know, big enough for the kids to play ball and do, do whatever, but.
And it connects the park.
And then across the street, so we lined, we lined this, we could've put it anywhere, but we lined it up so that, you know, if you're in the park and you're coming over here and doing whatever, they, they can connect right to the park. So the one piece does connect, and that was always on the plan, uh, but we really never figured it as like a, um.
Separate lot.
A separate lot line, um, to the park, so it was just, and as Steve said, I think we're gonna find these nuances, as we continue.
See, if you're gonna, this little piece across the street, if you're gonna incorporate that as part of lot one sixty-eight.
Correct.
Otherwise, it's just kind of no means.
Correct, it'll be, it will do a hashtag.
Yeah, that's what, yeah, I was wondering.
Yeah, so that little, as Derek said, that little piece, um, this piece, that'll be part of this lot, you know what I mean? So it'll be really just, we'll mow from the end of the park, do you know the park? Yeah, so if you guys know the park, we'll mow that little strip and for the association, well, and we'll do that.
Okay, so you're looking for approval on the new classification?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Okay, do you wanna do approval?
Yes, I'll make a, a motion to approve the, um, modification for the Freedom Square.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, and just so you know, I did, uh, well, uh, they're talking about the authority. I did reserve, uh, one hundred and sixty-seven, which you know about, and I just reserved the next sixty. So, um, R G S and myself will start working on, um, phase two, which will be the townhouses connecting to Penetron. Through phase one, we're gonna stone it, so we have a connection, but we'll, uh, we'll then work on all those connections and that type of thing. So we'll have sixty more, uh, to use, so that would be the next phase, and we're gonna start on that, you know, in the next few months, and we'll come in right after that.
So when are you planning your first phase?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping that in the next few months, we get comments from D E P, and we've, I, we've talked to them for two and a half years, and we've had, like, I don't know, a Zoom meeting every other month with, like, thirty little D E P people on the screen, so. Um, I think we've done everything, and, um, R G S just had a problem before our project that D E P came and said, no, we want more test sites. So we had a very extensive, uh, Zoom meeting, and then we met at the site of where they wanted us to study, more studies done, and it was like double the studies that they said originally. But then they agreed to all that, so I think we're, I mean, you never know, but I think we're further along than, um, the project that R G S just did somewhere else. So we at least knew to try to pinpoint D E P a little further. So I, I really think, I mean, we have basically phase one preliminary out to bid to, um, several contractors now, so, so we can get preliminary numbers and then it's just sort of, bring up the weight.
And so also, if you, if you would authorize me.
To do a letter.
To do the letter. Maybe that can.
That'd be awesome.
And you'll need a bit on that.
Yeah.
Okay, I move that we, uh, do a letter in acknowledgement of what's going on, and have Steve prepare it.
Yeah. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you, have a good night.
Thanks.
And we're doing the same thing with, um, Northern Regional, everything's on hold there because of D E P.
Right, yeah, so, um, the, the problem with a lot of them is they don't work, um, in the office much. So they're all at home, and you're trying to reach this one and reach that one, so it's a little hard.
Well, with Northern Regional, uh, what they wanted, um, they're building three warehouses, two of them are a thou, a million square feet, and they said instead of building two, one million square feet warehouses, why don't you build one on top of a two-story warehouse? And it was like, well, that's not gonna work, unless you have the topography, you know, to actually do that. But, uh, so then they had to go back, no, that's not gonna work, we can't put two warehouses, one on top of the other. But, yeah, it was just back and forth, so now it's still on hold.
Yeah, so I, I think that we'll have everything else through, and we'll answer all of Derek's stormwater questions, and then we'll just wait and wait. So we're ready, um, whenever, whenever allowed.
Thank you, thank you.
Uh, hopefully this week. See you. Thank you.
Do you have anything else, Fred, on the planning and, okay. Uh, the reports, we have, uh, the building report, and we have Northern, we have the police report. So I just wanted to let you know, we had National Night Out last night, it was a big success, lots of people there. Uh, we gave a, well, the, um, Detective Baker actually did the hamburgers, he did a thousand hamburgers, and we had tons of hot dogs, so we had lots of Uber, but, uh, fifty pizzas, we had french fries, grapes, ice cream, gave away two TVs, uh, fourteen bikes, gave away a gas grill, so it was very successful, and we had entertainment too. So, um, everybody had a good time, and I wanna thank everybody that, uh, came to National Night Out. Uh, as far as the police report. Okay, in May, we had a seventeen point, uh, seventeen and a half percent increase in the calls, uh, for the month of May. And in June, we had a, almost a thirty percent increase in calls. So they've been very busy in our township in the last couple months.
Any, any driving over a year or seventeen percent up year over year? Just any, any endpoint there?
Well, uh, we do have quite a few things that showed, and I'll show you those. Uh, we had, um, for the month of June, we had twenty drivers arrested for DUI. The lowest blood alcohol content was, uh, point one nine four, that was the lowest, and the highest, actually, the lowest was one point one four, the highest was point three six four.
Wow.
That's almost, he, he had to drive because he probably couldn't walk at that point. Not a good way to put it, but. Also, um, Anderson, um.
Greg.
Correct, yeah, Greg Anderson, uh, he's the one that writes up our police reports. And, uh, in Cunnawaka Township, on, um, uh, June the eighth, there was a dog bite, and it was a nineteen-year-old jogger was running, and she was bit by a dog. But instead of just giving the, um, overall review of it, his report says, a nineteen-year-old jogger was bitten on the buttocks by a basset hound. So he always gives a little, uh, something funny in there, that, um, I think when I was nineteen, I could about ran a basset hound, I'm not quite sure. Uh, also, in Doverburg, we reported last month that, uh, there was a homicide. A forty-two-year-old male and a thirty-one-year-old female were arrested for killing her mother. So they have quite a few, there was a lot of dog bites in the last, I guess it was the heat did it or something, but there was a lot of, uh, attacks by dogs. Also, um, overdoses, and we also had, um, a lot of internet fraud. But according to what you were saying about the increase, um, so suspicious activity, we had, uh, for the month, we had twenty, eighty, and these are just service calls, basically. Animal complaints, they went up, and it was fourteen for the month, EMS calls were fifty. Civil matters went from last year, four, up to fifteen. And nine-one-one hangups is what I mentioned last month. But, um, I don't know if people are giving their children their cell phone to entertain them, and what they're doing is hitting the emergency button. So last year, we had fourteen nine-one-one hangups, this year, we had, this month, we had fifty-four. So that's, you know, one of the increases, and you never know, you, you have to check them out. So do you have anything else, Derek?
I haven't at all. You know it.
Okay, so that's everything I have, do I hear a motion to accept the police report and the building report?
I make a motion to accept the police report and the building report, looks pretty, the building report looks pretty slim.
Everybody's on occasion?
Yeah.
Okay, so you made a motion, I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Treasure report, you had a chance to review?
Yes, I did.
And I had no questions?
I didn't either. I'll make a motion to accept the treasure report.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The manager and the road report.
Let's have a couple things, um, resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen.
Is your mic on?
It is now. Uh, the adoption of Evan and Dylan Drive in Penetron, which Rick is going to get the deed of dedication signed by the fifteenth, I think he said.
I think he's back fifteen, bringing eighteen.
And you'll record it and give me all the information, that way we can get, then have it for the thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Of August, tester cutoff for liquid fuels, adding it. Now you're meeting its bond on that.
Yeah, yeah, you give us, now we'll get it.
I'm comfortable with the passage of the resolution with those.
With the administrative things that are happening.
In place, yeah.
Fritz, everything's okay with you? No, Fritz, it's, uh, I already figured that happened, uh. Okay, uh, so it's resolution twenty twenty-three dash fifteen, I have a motion to accept it with the, um, administration outstanding issues.
Yeah, I, um, I make a resolution, or make the recommendation to, um, accept the resolution, uh, twenty twenty-three fifteen with the administrative changes.
I'll second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Second, just the website is starting to be designed, so hopefully within the next month or two, we should have it up in line. Uh, Double Dog Communications is doing it for us. Lastly, we've had some issues with a couple videos, one near the meeting room and in front entrance way. They're being replaced one day.
Oh.
And then our hall to the recording one day.
That's a shame, brand new windows, and now we have to have them replaced all day.
And it could keep happening. It's in fabrication, and the roller stopped on the window.
And make a. And they got.
And he makes a heat, and it's in some places that take two years or much longer. So two years from now, we're gonna get the same thing happen.
And there are some scratches on it too, from like a razor or something when you open it up.
Double weapon, grabbing nine, the entire entranceway is getting replaced. Every single window has it now. And this one over here, the last one, in fact, you can see it right now, that center.
Yeah, the line right down the center. What, the doors, are they okay?
We got redone too.
Well, we have all our verbiage on there.
Thanks. We're having all that redone. I had Joe making two sets of catalog and some symbols of what we have it, just in case something else happens.
So are they, we're not paying for it?
Not at all. It's on the warranty.
And it's a nighttime warranty? Yeah, that is a lot of work.
It is.
But, gotta be right. Yeah, and the website's gonna be really nice because we're gonna be in on it ourselves, keep everything updated.
Yes.
And keep in mind, our minutes are not posted until they're approved. So now, the minutes for last month will not be approved till next month. So if they won't be on, they'll be a month behind.
Yeah, and the interface with the website is gonna be more modern feel. So we'll be able to find things easier, we'll be able to, our communication will be a lot easier to define. So we're really excited about it.
You'll be streaming the meetings because you got the cameras back there.
We're not gonna stream meetings. We decided not to do that. You stream the meetings. You're good.
Because you guys don't.
And also, we're gonna have calendars on there that show all the events, anything we have.
Our SAVI calendar will be integrated with.
Yeah, the SAVI calendar, yeah. And also, we did finalize it, but probably a lot of our fees and things that are paid can be paid through PayPal on the new website.
Like we envision the design as you're controlling, be, you know, go on.
And see if it's available, first of all.
And pay for it.
Yeah. I don't take a lot of calls away from administration because people just call and ask if it's available here or there, what I, how I pay. So we're, you're excited.
Yes.
And when, when do you think I'll be up and running?
She said about any complication within the next month, month and a half.
Okay, great. All righty. Listener's report.
So I've been kind of in constant communication with Josh this month about some problems. One being the non-payment of some of the Penn Waste accounts. And we looked at the, at an ordinance today, ordinance three forty-two, which does allow, if township wants, to initiate fines and levies against township residents that are more than ninety days delinquent. So that becomes an option. You want to explore that. The other problems have been more, so that's kind of a general thing that's come up. And then some of the other ones have just been some particular.
The only thing with that, we don't want to become a collection of these things.
I understand.
So I think it's up to Penn Waste, if people aren't paying Penn Waste, a Penn Waste machine.
Yeah, and Josh is gonna, I believe, is gonna have a, reach out to them to have a conversation, you know, later on, and, you know, kind of get some of their feedback. So for right now, just, I'm just putting it on the table that it could be an option if, you know, come serious enough, if they stop, you know, if they take any steps.
I think people would be amazed when they see how many delinquent counts that are out there.
And, you know, and then, so if, if that does, if we would ever get to that, the ordinance does allow for the collection of legal fees, so there's no cost to anybody that's not involved other than the delinquent residents. Then the other ones are just kind of some more isolated and specific things, ranging from maintaining junkyards, accumulation of trash. Somebody is in the setback line of, you know, so.
That we talked about last month.
Yeah, and, and so again, I wasn't here, but just, you know, there are some ordinances, and the Northern Regional is, you know, is gonna be involved with some of those, both warnings and action that needs to be taken. And then the only other thing I had was just a more FYI. I attended a hearing that was, was a zoning variance appeal where Fritz had testified. Township is technically a party to the, to the hearing. So I had attended on behalf of that to ask some questions of the parties and witnesses and things like that. Yeah, so that's, that's it for this month.
All right, thank you, Steve. Engineer's report.
Okay, we have on the agenda tonight, a reduction for the Locust Point bond or the Cube of Locust Point. This is, this is a goofy one because we already took action on this back in December. The story goes that the developer failed to turn the paperwork into the bank to actually reduce the bond. And then when he went to do this again last month, the bank would not accept paperwork from December since it was created within six months. I don't know why, because it's still official action. But at the developer's request, he, he requested that we reissue and reauthorize this release, which is why you have another letter in front of you here to have dated July twenty. So I would request that a motion be made to basically re-release or re-renew the bond.
Okay. Okay, I don't see any problem with that. I mean, we went through all that before.
Yeah.
So just make sure he gets us to the bank.
Yeah, I, I think he's motivated at this point. I mean, it's a, it's a five-million-dollar release.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like a check after, why you just can't.
Right. It just, I don't know how you forget about a five-million-dollar bond release, but I wish I had those kind of problems.
Yeah. Okay, I'll make the motion to do the bond reduction, reissue the letter again.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's fine. Unfinished business?
Yeah, other items that need to.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
Close you all share, didn't I?
That's exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm rolling into. That's, that's me too, unfinished business for people's stormwater ordinance. So as, again, we've been, we've been looking at this for a little while now. It's been quite a few months since this draft ordinance was provided. I did take the time at John's request and write a riveting memo of all of the changes that you would see between your old ordinance and the new ordinance. And just to, just to briefly go over some of that, a lot of it is just changes in technical requirements to match D E P's ordinance. So this isn't a sweeping change of your ordinance. The design criteria does have some goodies in it that we didn't have previously. Again, surprisingly, it's been ten years since we updated your ordinance. And a lot has happened in the world of stormwater management in the last ten years as you heard Tim talk about his struggles with D E P. Everything continues to get more complicated and more regulated. So there have been some, some changes in the design criteria to reflect, you know, more current approaches to stormwater management, some more current regulations, and again, some more current type of stormwater facilities that we're seeing. You know, different types of infiltration facilities, different types of rain gardens. They've become, by our attention, it's become way more popular in the last ten years. So we needed to up our ordinance and, and regulate some of those a little bit stronger than what we have. The, the most sweeping change, and, and this is something that, again, I'd like to, I'd really like to discuss with you, mainly with your staff and you as supervisors as well, before we necessarily pull the trigger on approving this advertisement, is your, your plan criteria and your exemption criteria. Those are the sections I would really like you to focus on and think about. And Fritz, that's gonna take a lot of your input, is what you like and what you don't like before the ordinance becomes publicized. And right now, you have a twelve-hundred-square-foot stormwater exemption per lot. And then anything above twelve-hundred is a full stormwater management plan, assuming that stormwater isn't being taken care of as part of the land development process. So that, that's the route you went right now. There are other options, which I threw all three options in there with some kind of suggested brackets of, you know, U Institute. Instead of just doing a carte blanche exemption, I would strongly recommend you look at more of a fee in lieu of stormwater management than a straight-up exemption. I don't like the exemptions because I don't want anyone to think that they're just totally not regulated by the ordinance. You still need to meet the pieces and parts of the ordinance. It's just, we're not making you put a facility, okay? So you still, you don't want to give up all your teeth is what concerns me about a straight-up exemption that's in your current ordinance. But there are some, some simplified methods that you could implement that if someone wants to build a pretty big pole barn up, you know, up in the hills, they might not have to go through a full stormwater management plan like they're doing right now. That's unfortunately more administration, don't get me, as you can. But those, those to me, those couple of sections that I highlighted, they're your biggest decisions because that's what's gonna impact your day-to-day and ultimately, your residents. How much, how much burden do you want to see with stormwater management? But there needs to be a line here where you can't just let everybody go with that.
Yes, and no matter what, they still have to do, they have to address the stormwater, but.
That, that's ultimately, even with a fee, like if you want, that's what I don't like about your current ordinance is I, is I don't like that right now, we're just basically offering a free twelve-hundred square feet. And if someone wants to put a twelve-hundred-square-foot structure right on their boundary line and discharge it to their neighbor's property, I think we have limited ability right now to prevent that. And again, I don't believe, personally, I think a twelve-hundred-square-foot exemption works on some of your more rural properties. But I really don't want anybody, you know, some of your densely populated, especially, you know, you get Freedom Square coming in, some of your, Ben Run, Stone Gate, all of these newer developments with smaller lots. That's a considerable amount of impervious area that you're adding that might not necessarily have management associated with it really impacting people.
Okay, so it sounds like we're not ready to advertise this at all. We have some question.
I wouldn't recommend it at this point.
Can we set up a discussion, maybe you, myself, Fritz, Josh, sit down, Loretta as well, and Brian, to, to kind of talk about those, those changes and recommendations?
Yeah.
So we can come together on that?
I think, I think you're close. I, I'd like to see, I'd like to see a discussion happen if we do that in the next month, I'd agree. Whether or not at that point, and I mean, again, we could, we could do those, we could do that discussion. I can incorporate the revisions and send it out to you guys. And if everybody's in agreeance, then potentially next month, we could be ready to have it done. Otherwise, the ordinance is ready to go in its current situation. But I think you want to read it a little bit.
No, I think so too. Can we schedule, so Josh, can you coordinate a meeting with Derek and with us?
From the in-house or through Zoom?
Doesn't matter, whatever, you guys are, it's easy enough for me to drive up here.
Okay. Do you think we need to drive up here though?
Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared whenever the, I knew the thing hitting out, so whenever you get it down, I'm fine.
Okay, because it's expensive to advertise, and we don't want to do it and then come back again and decide we want to do something else. So we want to get it right and get it going. Okay, well, go ahead. What was that, ordinance number three seventy-one?
Three seventy-one, yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll just discuss that, and hopefully we can get it advertised next month. I'm not cutting you off. Do you have anything else?
I don't, unless you have any questions for me.
Okay. We were just talking about the Mill Creek Park, about redoing some upgrades there. So we have a couple of things in the plans for that. Probably nothing will start until mid-September, so we can get together and discuss things there. Okay, new business? Anybody got anything new? Other business? Okay, I have a couple of things. Just want to announce Food Truck Friday, this Friday. Generation Gap is also gonna be the band that's playing up there. If it doesn't rain, we're talking about it. Shannon, do you have any food trucks in mind that are coming up there? Mr. Frosty comes up and Zindi fries.
So I think Mr. Frosty just called Bonnie, the receptionist, today and said that they might not be able to make it. They have another event during the day. They're still gonna try and rush back to make it. So I know Bonnie was gonna call Sarah's Creamery and see if maybe they were possibly available, but.
Okay. Also, Northeastern Senior Center, they're gonna have a concert in the park. It's gonna be up at the Mill Creek Park, which is located seven oh four East Canal Road. It's from nine-thirty to one o'clock. Everybody's invited. They're gonna have a band, and they're also having food trucks. So it's, they have birday, B-I-R-D-A-Y. But it's Friday, September the eighth, from nine-thirty to one, and everybody's invited. And also, recently, they're in the midst of purchasing the Stripes Town Church, fifty-six seventy-five Sesquahana Trail. And they hope to have closing on, in early September of that. And that's gonna be their new senior center. So you're excited about that, Larry?
Yeah.
So Larry, I've never been in there. Is that one floor then? Or like, is it gonna be accessible?
There's a basement.
Oh, okay.
But the basement isn't totally accessible.
Yeah, okay.
And it would be used primarily for storage, coolers and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
But this storage area.
But they have plenty of parking there, so it's a nice, it's a nice lot. But they're gonna have to do a lot of renovations to it.
Right, we're figuring we need maybe a hundred fifty, two hundred thousand in grant money to.
Wow.
To get it up, I mean, we have enough to purchase, but. You know, senior center is the main thing, is food. So we, we need to put more, something like a commercial kitchen in.
I don't think the Orsi was working with you too on that.
Yeah, yeah, I spoke to him about that, yeah.
Okay, well, good luck in getting that all accomplished. You got one on hands out back and.
Yeah, as soon as we settle, I'm, I, I expect to where they give me at least a key to it.
Okay, good. Okay, you had nothing else? You guys okay? All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.